Laurie Slapp calling the warrant committee to order.
Ann Marie Mahoney, Capital Budget Committee, happy to call to order, but I don't have a form.
All right, let us know when you do and we can officially do that.
I think there's just three of us.
I think this is it. It's as good as it's gonna get.
Good, good, good. Okay, good. Again, I would ask for everybody's indulgence for just one moment. We had a matter from last week that carried over related to increasing the number of parking permits in the Colaflin Lot from seventy-six to eighty. We had a couple of issues that we wanted to resolve through some follow-up. I think those issues have now been resolved. We've heard back from the various constituents, so I think at this point, we're just looking to officially get a motion to make that adjustment and vote it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So with that, I think we've got two, I guess, one topic of business, essentially two presentations. Town Administrator Patrice Garvin and Superintendent John Phelan will walk us through the FY21 budget. I think, Patrice, you are kicking off, correct?
So this is the proposed FY21 operating budget for the town of Belmont. Before I get started, I wanted to express my thank you to all the work that has been done. Really, we started this effort back in September of 2019 with the creation of the Financial Task Force before that, so I wanted to thank the Financial Task Force Two for their work in helping balance the FY21 budget, the select board, the department heads, school department, John Phelan, superintendent, the warrant committee, and the capital budget committee. I'd also like to thank my finance team that makes all of tonight and everything possible. That is Glenn Castro, the budget director, Matt Haskell, Pam Callahan in my office, John Marshall, the assistant town administrator, and Floyd Carmen, who sits through my presentations and offers advice, so I wanted to show my appreciation and gratitude for that. We, I would ask that we go through the budget presentation and any questions be at the end. So with that, in developing the FY21 budget, we were guided by good financial planning. We were using a five-year budget forecast model that was given to the town through the Community Compact grant that was received in 2015 using the work from the Collin Center. The Financial Task Force Two was appointed in 2018, but we were working off of the 2015 Financial Task Force One committee that was appointed. There are multiple recommendations that came out of this Task Force One, couple being the new facilities in town, the South Pleasant Street zoning, a recreation director, and one of the major recommendations from the Financial Task Force One was the 2015 override of $4.5 million. The good news with this override is when the Financial Task Force One met and recommended an override for $4.5 million, it was for three years. The town, through its conservative budgeting and expenditures, were able to extend the three-year goal of the FY15 override for six years, including FY21. The Financial Task Force Two has been meeting, and one of the first things that the Financial Task Force Two deliberated on when we first started meeting was whether or not the FY21 budget needed an operating override. One of the other things that we have very forefront in our minds when developing the FY21 budget is the high school borrowing. We have maintained our AAA bond rating, and last year, in the March of nineteen, the town borrowed its first hundred million dollars, which the taxpayers of the town, I believe, just saw in their tax bills this past spring, or past winter. This current March, we will borrow another one hundred million dollars, and then the March of twenty-one or twenty-two, the town will borrow the remaining money or funds required to complete the high school project. So in developing the FY21 budget, again, this budget started really in September of 2019. We had a kickoff meeting with all the department heads. In October of 2019, department heads met with the select board and myself to determine the budget needs for FY21. And then in the fall and November of 2019, there was an update to special town meeting from the Financial Task Force Two where we reported out that we believed we could balance FY21 budget without an operating override. And then this leads us here till tonight. The assumptions when creating the FY21 budget. There were one-time revenue sources identified. We were really trying to think outside the box in how to balance the 21 budget. We knew that we needed to push off the override another year. I will go into some of the one-time revenue sources we identified later in the presentation. The select board initiated health plan design changes. This was a four percent projected increase for FY21 versus the ten percent increase we would have had to implement if we didn't receive any design changes. On the town department's side, in public safety, there were deferrals in what I call minor capital outlay, again, which I'll go through a little bit later in the presentation. Town departments were asked only to increase contractual service lines, including union contract obligations. Union contracts are up in June of this year, so we carried a zero percent COLA for all union negotiations. The governor's state aid for Chapter Seventy and unrestricted general government is also included in the FY21 budget assumptions, which is what we're seeing as a nominal increase. And again, we've continued to apply the Collin Center recommendations. This is, again, a grant that the town received through the Community Compact, which helped us develop a budget, five-year budget forecast. One of the other recommendations from the Collin Center at that time was a different way to recalculate the indirect costs for the enterprise fund, which is included in FY21 budget. Town's operating budget for FY21 is a total of $136 million. This is a 6.4% total increase over FY20. The town's operating side of the budget is an estimated $42 million, a change of $117,000. The town's operating budget has only increased by .3%. This is, again, due to health plan design, deferrals in capital outlay, and the request to only fund contractual increases in FY21. The school operating budget is holding at $62.5 million, which John will get into a little bit later in his presentation, which is $1.8 million increase. The capital budget, we are showing a decrease in the capital. I want to explain that this is additional funds that were found in FY20 of turnback money from capital projects. This is why we're showing a slight decrease in the FY21 budget. In FY20, there was money, again, identified over the 1.4. And then the fixed cost, which is showing a $6.6 million increase to $30 million, is one of the larger increases in the budget. Fixed costs. Some people, for those at home that don't understand what fixed costs are, this is a breakdown. We broke it out between town and schools, but all of these live on the town side. So for the town side, the total state charges is $1.8 million. This is an MBTA assessment that we get on our cherry sheet every year from the state. Total pavement and management, $1.7 million. This is funded through the operating override in 2015, along with the sidewalks of $226,000 that the DPW maintains in their budget. This is sidewalk maintenance. Clearly, $226,000 doesn't get us too far, but it helps. Total debt and interest for the town side, this is $2.8 million. Again, this is for town-related projects. Total retirement for town employees is $6.9 million, and the total assessors overlay is $840,000. This is where the, if someone goes in and gets the abatement, this is where it's gonna come from. On the school side, we're carrying the Minuteman assessment at $1.3 million. We started this number at 1.5 at the time of fall town meeting. We didn't know whether or not Minuteman was going to be a member district or a non-member district. When the vote came through to not rescind and withdraw, is that right, Jack? Okay. When that decision came through, given that we were still kind of teetering on some of the assumptions, we decided to hold the number at 1.5. When the governor's numbers came out, we estimated a little lower than what we had anticipated for state aid. We also, again, with not being a non-member district, we really, there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know how many children are going to be attending. We don't know what the total assessment's going to be. So we felt that lowering it slightly, we might have a little bit of wiggle room, and we feel comfortable with this number. We also received an email from Jim Gamble. He is the Minuteman School Committee member. Based on his numbers, we were somewhere around 1.2, so this is a little bit larger than what Jim had presented in his numbers. Again, the school is state charges that, on the cherry sheet, this is charter, school reimbursement, the debt and interest, which is $12.6 million. This is the high school. And then the total retirement is 2.2. Total retirement are for the non-teachers on the school side. We still have to pay their retirement cost. So I just want to make it clear that these numbers for the school, the $16.3 million, is outside of the $62 million that's appropriated for the school. Okay. So one-time revenues. As I stated before, there's a significant reliance on one-time revenues in the FY21 operating budget. This includes $3.4 million usage of free cash. We are being left with a remaining balance of free cash of $2.4 million. This one-time revenue includes a one, additional $1 million pilot payment from Belmont Electric Light. When I realized early on in the budget that we were gonna have to look for some revenue in some out-of-the-box thinking type of ways, I approached the Belmont Light Department to see if we could figure out a way to try and lessen the gap of the revenue and expenditures. What we decided to do, and I put the memo in your budget book, is to get an additional $1 million from Belmont Electric Light for FY21. And then what will happen is the $650,000 that usually comes to the town in the subsequent years will be lessened by $500,000 until we make up the difference. This is knowing that we're gonna have less revenue in outer years, but we felt that, given the need for it in '21, it was a good place to go and a good plan to put forward. Again, the one-time money also includes $1.2 million in indirect costs for water and sewer. This is the indirect costs that we calculated through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. This is coming through retained earnings. We are still watching the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. Their retained earnings are healthy, but given the indirect cost and given some other costs within the Water and Sewer Departments, we feel this is something that we need to watch for FY22 very closely. So the total one-time revenues for FY21 is $5.6 million, which is 4.1% of the total So budget highlights. The Belmont Public School is $63 million for FY21. Minuteman tax is 1.4. We're kind of rounding up. Debt service is $14 million. The total town departments is $42 million, and it includes the 1.4 in benefits, which is Medicare, general insurance, workers' comp, unemployment compensation, the health insurance line, which is $5.1 million, pension is $9.1 million, and then OPEB, which is about $500,000. So the budget priorities. Looking at '21, the biggest priority I had was to balance the budget, which we did. And I'm thankful for the department heads that worked with us to do that. I'm thankful for the school department that helped in regards to some of their expense lines, which John will go through, the Belmont Light, which I explained, and the Water and Sewer Departments. It was a group effort, and we really put a lot of work in making sure that the '21 operating budget was balanced, putting off an override. The other, obviously, the priorities is to not only balance the budget, but to keep a great school system. So education is, you know, education, maintain town services, and capital infrastructure wouldn't have been able to happen without being able to balance that budget. So this is just a quick pie chart. Always like a good pie chart. This pretty much shows the expenditure summary of the school and the town. Sixty-six percent, $90 million of the budget, salary and benefits. That's where the money is. Non-salary contractual expenses, about $27 million, and then you can see the other numbers as they follow. So I mentioned the deferrals that I consider minor capital, that we deferred for one year for FY21. This is equipment in the facilities department of $25,000. Fire department, this is needed turnout gear, fire suppression equipment, EMT replacement equipment. The library, there was about $12,000 for computer equipment. Police department, this is cruises and office supplies and equipment. And then DPW, central fleet equipment, cemetery equipment, parks and facilities. We have built this back into the FY22 model, so it is back in. I would say that this is public safety equipment. I'm not happy about deferring equipment such as this, but I think, given some of the other alternatives, one of the biggest challenges was you can't defer staff, you can't defer people. And one of the things I wanted to make sure we did with FY20 budget is to keep staffing levels the same. This is just a quick five-year comparison for expenditures. It's just something to look at and to see, obviously, costs go up year over year. I've never seen one of these charts where prices go down, so maybe someday. This is the non-excluded debt service. This is debt that's within the levy, that's in the operating budget. It is going up $100,000 in FY21. That is for the DPW police building that was borrowed within the operating budget, within the levy, two years ago, I think, a couple of years ago, one year ago? This is our excluded debt. These, this is the debt that comes from votes, townwide votes, for projects outside of the levy. You'll see in FY20 and '21, the $5.2 million increases. That is the high school. Enterprise funds. So the assessments for the MWRA have not been, we have not been, we have not received those yet. We won't get that until mid to late February. I will tell you that of that $701,000 increase in water, $413,000 of that is capital. We are using retained earnings to fund the Water and Sewer budgets. This is obviously to keep the rates down. We'll have more information once we get those assessment numbers in. Revenue summary. There's $136,581,778 in the total budget. Eighty percent of all of our revenue is from property tax. It's $109 million. State aid is at $12.2 million. That's nine percent. Local receipts, this is excise, mill tax, all those funky little taxes we get to collect, is about $8.3 million. And then available funds is 6.7. Available funds is where a lot of that one-time money lives. This is receipts reserved for parking meters, free cash, overlay, Belmont Electric Light, pilot, water and sewer indirect costs, capital turnbacks, and the capital endowment fund. This is a quick summary of the state aid in Chapter Seventy. As you can see, Chapter Seventy and the general municipal aid is increasing, as I stated earlier, at a very nominal rate. A total of $209,518 is what we received in additional revenue from the state for FY21. This is the revenue summary for the town of Belmont. As you can see, the big blue piece is property tax. That's pretty much where it lives. This slide is a slide that I showed last year, and I feel it's a really important slide. This is the revenue and expenditures for the town from FY17. So the blue is the revenue, and the yellow is the expenditures. Year over year, the expenditures are increasing at a rate that is faster than the recurring revenue. Recurring revenue is pretty much local receipts, property tax, state aid. You'll see that without the one-time money, which we're using to fund the delta, we would be, would not be balanced. This is just a quick summary of our certified free cash since 2007. It's always good to kind of look at this from a multi-year perspective. The thing I wanted to point out about this slide is free cash is very volatile. A lot of things affect the free cash amount. It could be as simple as a reimbursement ding that you get from DOR. It could be because your department budget's so tight that they're using every dollar that they can, so they're not turning back as much. And it could be you estimated a revenue too high, and it just doesn't come in. So to fund an operating budget using free cash is risky. So I think this shows a little bit of that dip. It just comes out of nowhere. So additional revenue for the town in FY21. We're seeing a total of $8.2 million of additional revenue. That's 2.8 in property taxes, and then the $5 million, which is the debt exclusion, which all goes to fund the high school. We don't get to use that $5 million to fund the DPW or the police. It all goes to the debt. State aid, again, is only $209,000, and local receipts, $472. There was a question that came through the warrant committee this afternoon from Mr. Weiss, and I appreciate the question. He had noticed that the total of the new revenue was really 8.5, but what we didn't factor in is the decrease in available funds over FY20, making the only available revenue is 8.2. The reason why the available funds is not as much in '21 as it is in '20 is because we were very cognizant of how much free cash we were using. We didn't want to go down to a level where we were risking future operating budgets. We felt that having a $2.4 million balance in free cash, not healthy, but it was something. So the way the new revenue breaks out over the different town departments is the town operating budget received the $117,000. The school operating is receiving 1.8 of the new additional revenue. The capital budget, again, as I explained, is down due to not having the turnbacks in the '21 budget. And then the fixed cost is $6.6 million, which, again, all can be related to the debt. I do want to point out with this slide that what's driving, what's driving the budget and the revenue is the school enrollment. We're seeing such an uptake in school enrollment that it seems to just be driving everything in the budget. This is just a quick five-year revenue comparison, just to show some of the, how property tax, state aid, and local receipts has changed over the course of so many years. I would like to point out that under the available funds, which is where a lot of the one-time revenue exists, that's increasing, and it's showing that the town is starting to rely more and more on one-time revenue. This is just a quick little summary about how we determine the property tax. This is the base levy of any given fiscal year, and you add the two and a half, which the state is limiting on towns to do. Prop two and a half came in, and this is what we are legally required to raise the base levy at. We then add the new growth, so what we estimate new growth will be. We have an estimated new growth number for FY21 of $920,000. And then you get your total base levy, which is what we are estimating to receive from the property taxes for FY21. So some factors to consider, looking at '21 and '22 beyond that. There's the use of one-time funds to balance FY21 budget. I think I've stated this over and over. The concern here, obviously, is that one-time money will not be available in FY22, which is creating the need for a potential override in FY22. We'd like to reinstate the necessary deferred minor capital in FY22 to the public safety departments. We have shown a decrease in free cash in the general stabilization fund. We are watching that and if effects, if it has any effects on the bond rating, and what that will do for a potential override in November. Revenue and expenditures are increasing at different rates. Discretionary capital expenditures is going up by two and a half percent. The capital needs in this community are extensive. You sit down with Ann Marie for five minutes, and you'll understand that some of the capital needs in the community are just more than what we are able to spend, and what, more than that two and a half is covering. IT is an infrastructure, is becoming a major infrastructure for all towns, and we're not near what we need to spend on IT. And then all town and school teacher union contracts expire in June of 2020. So the town is, again, limited by Proposition Two and a Half, and we do have some fixed cost increases, which we have to consider looking at FY22. The high school is going to be coming online, the new high school in FY23, and facility operations, so we're factoring all that into the five-year budget forecast. And of course, to maintain the quality services in town, such as the schools, the library, and the senior center. So finally, strategies moving forward. So the Financial Task Force is diligently working through the level service budget, some other additional items for potential override, and then we're also, the Financial Task Force has recommended a long-term capital planning committee, which the selectmen are currently working to appoint members to that, and they're gonna be starting to meet and work real soon. We are looking at potential recommendation for an override for November 2020 ballot, and we also need to look at impact services if an operating override is not achieved. The town continues to seek grant opportunities. We received two small grants for the Community Compact this year. We're looking at the municipal vulnerability program, which the governor just funded at $10 million. We're going to be looking to submit projects for the complete streets this spring. We're looking at potential mass works and transportation improvement grants for the upcoming year. Again, collective bargaining contracts are in, the works, we started negotiating on the town side, and the schools already started, so this is going to be a lot of work in the next coming year. And then we're also constantly looking to investigate shared alternatives. When I was looking to appoint a assistant town administrator, I merged that with REC. Human Resources has taken a benefits coordinated position and is sharing it with the Belmont Light Department. We have plumbing and electrical inspectors shared with other towns, a health nurse through the Board of Health that shared with another town, and the COA has a shared position between the schools and the senior center. So we're constantly looking for those types of opportunities to help offset some of the costs in the operating budget. So with that, that concludes my budget presentation. I don't know if you want to do questions now or wait until after the school.
Okay, why don't we do questions now?
Okay.
Are there any questions from the audience? I'm sorry, the group assembled here.
If nobody else has any, Patrice, oops, sorry. I have a, I guess, a number of questions or comments that are directed mostly towards your cover letter in the notebook.
Yep.
And, I mean, I can send this to you in an email also, but let me just run down my list. I think it'd be helpful in understanding these numbers, for example, on pages two and three, when you have just breakdowns of the projected expenditures and revenues, to have a comparison with at least the prior year in the letter, because otherwise, it's hard to tell what to make of a number. I heard you say that you don't have a COLA factored into the budget now, because that's something to be determined in the next round of negotiations. So does that, I guess there are two questions from that. One, just on a pro forma basis, if the COLA were 1%, what would the impact be? Just to get an idea of what the COLA is potentially worth. And then secondly, if a COLA is agreed to, is that something that would be effective as of the fiscal '21 budget, so it would be an additional expenditure in this budget that you've presented now?
So given that it's union negotiations, I do hesitate to answer some of those questions. I will say that we're carrying in the individual lines a 0% COLA.
Okay. But if there were a COLA, that it would no longer be a zero, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. I had a detailed questions on the Belmont Light pilot scheme, which I think was ingenious. I had a detailed questions on the Belmont Light pilot scheme, which I think was ingenious. The, the payback schedule, I think, is a little bit off, and I talked to Chris Roy about this some time ago, when the memo that is included in the notebook was really kind of a rough cut.
Yep.
But I think that number needs to be refined because Belmont Light should pay us back a little bit more, or we pay them a little bit less in the future, if you use the right interest rate. I was a little concerned about the free cash, oops, the free cash number in your presentation. Turn to that. I guess it's on slide seven. It says it's projecting, after using 3.4 million of free cash for fiscal '21, that there'd be 2.4 million remaining?
Yep.
I guess one detail is whether that incorporates the expected OPEB contribution. But then generally, if only 2.4 million is left, or potentially even less after an OPEB contribution, that really is far outside of the guideline range.
Correct.
So I think that raises two questions in my mind. One, I brought up in an earlier meeting that I think the warrant committee guideline itself needs to be revised because it's, it's an all-in, it, it, the guideline is the ratio of certified free cash to the next year's operating budget, but it's an all-in number including expenditures that are really secured by debt exclusions. And in the past, that wasn't such a big deal, but the high school spending has really now distorted that comparison enough that I think that the, just the, the methodology itself should be revised to exclude amounts that are covered by debt exclusions. But either way, I think we're going to be below a guideline level that we've been using for some time now, which I think is underscoring the fact that this budget, I think, is ingenious for getting us through fiscal '21, but this is a one-time only achievement. Okay, I'm almost done. On page five of the letter, if I read this right, it says total pilot payments other than Belmont Light is only $36,000?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know this topic is a perennial question, but is, is there any sense in reopening these pilot discussions with the entities that are paying pilots?
Well, I realize there's a subcommittee of the warrant committee that is dealing with this topic as of right now, so I know there's been discussion on that end. I've had discussions with the assessors in the past about what possible pilot payments could be based on, obviously, the tax value of the properties. So I definitely think it's warranted discussion, anything that I think we needed. I've had conversations with Belmont, Belmont Hill, the properties that they acquired across the street on Park Ave, those properties are still paying taxes on them. They are still being used as residential properties. The discussions we had is once those properties no longer remain residential, there might be some discussions on pilot payments.
Okay.
That's as far as I've gotten.
Right, I think that's all I had for now.
Mike?
Hi. So I'd like to ask how we're handling uncertainty in the budget with respect to vocational technical education. So we're carrying, we're carrying an amount in the budget of 1.355 million for, per the Minuteman assessment, based on, on information that seems to be fairly late-breaking
Yep.
From our town Minuteman representative. It looks as though we will not have a freshman class at Minuteman this year. If those students are able to find positions elsewhere, is, is, first of all, we don't know what that will cost, and we don't know the numbers of students. Is the thought that, you know, this assessment line is available to pay for students, whether they're going to Minuteman or not? And I'm just wondering how we handle the uncertainty in the budget about the total numbers?
Yeah, I think those are conversations that need to happen. I will say one of the disadvantages of not being a member is not knowing what the assessment is at this point in the game. It's an unknown, and we can only budget to what we know. And I think we have a good number in the budget as of right now. It could go up, it could go down. It, it's one, it's an uncertainty, I'm not going to argue with Mike. It's whether or not, where it comes from, if that number goes up, or if there has to be placement somewhere else, I think we have to have those conversations. Because the way the budget is structured right now, there's no, there's really not a lot of wig over it. I mean, like I had stated before, a lot of the, a lot of this is funded through one-time, one-time a month. Now, we could have breaks in other things. I mean, the governor's numbers might not hold. We, once it goes to the state and the House, we might see a little bit more money in Chapter 70, we might see a little bit more money in unrestricted. We have to kind of wait and see.
If I could just follow up really quickly and then I'll drop the topic. When we find out what we're liable for in terms of tuition payments come next fall, that we have to pay, we have to pay for
Yes, it's a fixed cost, yep.
So the question, the question is, should we be planning now for some form of a reserve, even if only a very limited reserve? Or do we just wait till this fall? That's, that's
Yeah, I, I think I'd have to flush that out more with some of the people in this room. Emery?
Question, should we include at this juncture in the revenues the Chapter 90 roads money or wait until we get an absolute thing to stake, given that it's five, usually about $530,000?
Yeah, I think that's what we're tracking right now.
$541,000.
Yeah, $541,000. Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a revenue number. It's kind of an in and out number, but yeah. Chris?
So just to clarify, is that number reflected in both the revenue and the cost right now, or is it not?
It's not, no, we don't have it in there.
Neither?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's all for roads and payment and roads.
Okay.
It looks like the Chapter 70 increases in several years.
Yeah.
Does that, does that, does that, or is that a function of the, the budget approach?
Could you repeat the question?
It's the, I'm sorry, what Chris asked is the Chapter 70 number is much lower than it has been in previous years. So, yeah, I would say this came as a little bit of a surprise to me. I know John was also surprised by the, the number. You know, we had a much higher number. We had to find an additional 300,000 in the budget that we didn't anticipate. So is this a trend moving forward? I don't know. I mean, we were being told by the legislators that Chapter 70 would actually, you know, be better. So I think we just have to wait and see, and see what happens to the House and the, and the Senate budgets for FY '21. And John can expand on it a little bit more. Ms. Weiss?
Could you just follow up Roy's comment about use of free cash? If I understand it correctly, I'm trying to fumble where the number was, because there was somewhere in the budget material, you stored use of free cash, but you have in the chart what the balance is, but
You mean the certification?
3.4 million is not wildly inconsistent with how much free cash we've been using to supplement the budget each year, and our balance is not materially different than, than it has been in prior years. So it's not like we're on the very edge of the utilization of free cash, because there's some assumption that with conservative budget and the revenue license, it will get rid of it, it's going to be more difficult.
Yep.
So
I think the
... great budgeting, who would we not use crazy?
Well
Patrice, could you attempt to summarize the question?
Sure.
Because I
Jack is wondering
People can speak, come, come to a microphone if possible, so we make sure we get it on the
So the 3.4 million that we're using in free cash in the operating budget, Jack has stated that that doesn't seem too wild from a difference from past and previous years. I would say that it's coupled with the use of stabilization that was used last year, which was at 2.6 million, and then we're using 2, 3.4 of free cash this year. I think what it is, is at some point, if your free cash isn't replenished, and we're expecting a replenishment in the fall, we're hoping for a healthy certified free cash number in November or late October of this year, yes, it will be replenished. But usually, we use about 2.2 million of free cash in the operating budget. We're using an additional 1.4. And we're also looking at an operating override in 2020. If we don't receive an operating override, that balance of 2.4 in free cash and what's remaining in stabilization, which I believe is 1.3, is it 1.3? 1.3. Will have to be probably used up. And then you're in a situation where you could lose your bond rating. I mean, I think that's what we're talking about. We've always followed the guidelines of the town to only use a certain amount of money in free cash. That keeps our undesignated fund balance up, it keeps our books looking very healthy, and it keeps that AAA bond rating, which saved about $5 to $6 million off of the high school borrowing the last round. So that's what we're looking at. It's not just the numbers, it's also what those numbers do for us on the other side, which is keeping our bond rating. Oh, Chris?
It might be useful to have the free cash chart in, it sounds sort of classy, but it might advance what you're talking about in like a segmented bar, because it looks, I mean, when someone just looks at that, they think it's just so much higher, when in fact, when you remove the, the dedicated pieces, then actually it's a much different picture. So I think that that presentation of it is a little bit misleading.
Okay. Anne?
Hi. Could you just, on the slide that shows property tax, it shows the base levy plus the 2.5%? I think it's on page 12. I think, I, I'd just like you to walk us through, because it looks like there's a lag, and I think that has to do with the assessments or something, but I just wanted to understand it, because the, in other words, the total base levy at the end of fiscal year 18 of 88.5 million, well, doesn't equal what you start out with 19. It's like it equals what you start out with in fiscal year 20. And I just, I always get this a little confused in my head, so I just wanted to see if you could walk us through that.
So you're talking about this slide, right?
Excuse me?
This one? This, okay. So with the base levy, you take the base levy from the previous year, multiply it by the 2.5, which is the prop 2.5 increase, add your new growth, and that's how you get your base levy. So you're using the prior year base levy?
Okay, except that it doesn't totally add up every year, and then when I'm looking at the bottom line in fiscal year 18, for example, when you start fiscal year 19, it's a, it's a lower number.
Well, we are rounding up and down.
But it looks like it's the number that starts fiscal year 20, so I didn't know if there's a lag in, I was just trying to understand it, or whether it's not, that we're not taxing to the levy, or
No, we're taxing to the levy.
Okay, I figured that.
Yeah.
But, but just to clarify, Patrice, so FY '20, if you look at the total base levy, it's $102.1 million.
Mm-hmm.
When you go to the next year, FY '21, the base levy is now 92 million.
Right.
Why is that less than the 102 from the previous year?
Because you're using the 92 from the total base levy from 19.
Yeah, but doesn't the total base levy include debt exclusions?
Yeah, you do that after.
But base levy is property tax without debt exclusion?
Yes, debt exclusion gets added on after. We were going to add excluded debt, but we didn't want to make it more confusing.
So, so we don't have a line for that, but it is included in there? Is that what you're thinking?
It's not part of the 109, it's above and beyond.
Oh, it's, okay.
Why is
So let me show you.
Why is the
Let me show you this number. Property tax is 109, that's what we collect, that's the 80%, and then the state aid, the local receipts, available funds. The excluded debt is, is in the available funds, because that's where the
Okay. Go ahead and ask your question. Yeah, I, the part that I don't understand on that other slide?
Yep.
If you start at, say, FY '16, your base was 75.
Mm-hmm.
You get to the bottom, it's 81.
Yep.
By the time you get to the top of '17, it's now down to 79.
So this 79?
And then, and then the 79, if you add 2,700,000, doesn't equal
Doesn't equal 85.5.
So I'm just trying to figure out whether there's other stuff in there, or how that works. I am not sure.
You want to take this one?
It's like, it's like the fiscal
Yep.
So I just want to be clear
Can you just introduce yourself, please?
Glenn Castro. The base levy
Yep.
Includes the debt exclusion.
75, yeah.
Correct. So all these numbers here are estimates. When I work with Dan Dargan, he provides me those numbers. So that's how we derive these numbers. So it's the base levy, 2.5, new growth, and then carry forward, that would be for the following fiscal year.
So that has excluded debt. Okay, that's, so it goes to fiscal year 18? Is that what happens then? The, the total base levy at the end of fiscal year 16, after you add everything, goes to fiscal year 18?
No, 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 no. You're only taking the three, the base levy, the 2.5, and the new growth.
Yeah.
Right? So the total base levy will, will be in addition to the debt exclusion.
Yeah.
But this is budget to budget. I just wanted to share that with you, because at the, all these numbers are just working with the assessor, providing the estimates.
Oh, I see, and so the next year, it's an actual, the actual is different than what your estimate is in the year.
Correct. Right, so it's estimates versus the actuals.
Okay, so fiscal year 20, the estimate was 102.1 million.
Sure.
And now, what we're starting with 92 million in fiscal year 21, that's, that's a large number.
Right, because
$100 difference. Is that because the assessors are saying that the estimate was not correct?
No, I think you got more new growth, right?
Yeah, new growth came in higher.
So that new growth number is an estimate. In one of those years, I think it was 18, we received a tremendous amount of money and
Right. So when we, when we do the recap, that changes the, the numbers. That's toward the, like, December. So when we start the budget, it's estimate, then we do the recap, and then it changes that, the amount, and that's why you see the 102, because of the increase in new growth.
So for FY '20, FY '20, there was about $1 million in new growth.
There was new growth above the 740.
Yes.
A million dollars in new growth.
Yep.
Even with that, though, it still doesn't sum up.
Yeah, could it, back, could we just work through an example? If you look at FY '18, there's base levy of 82, 2.5 increase of 2 gives you 84. New growth is another .9, so you're at 84.9. But then the total level is 88.5, which is way above that. So what's the counter to that difference?
You're missing the debt exclusion.
So there is debt exclusion?
This isn't a total, I guess it's
Not in the first total, not in '21, there's debt exclusion, no.
Right, you're right.
That's what I was saying initially, then. So the, the difference, if you add up the first three rows, a base levy, 2.5 increase, plus new growth, you then have to add to that new debt exclusion to get to the total base levy?
Yeah, your, your debt exclusion.
Okay. I guess, can we get this chart then with that line in there?
Yeah, sure. We went back and forth on
For example, what you're telling us is at the bottom of fiscal '20, that 102 includes the high school?
That includes the high school, yeah.
That's why 102 is accounted for.
Yeah.
And that's why the base stands lower, because you've got a backwards exclusion out from your base.
Right, right.
And that's why we didn't put the debt exclusion.
Well, if you, I think, a revision of this chart with an additional line and maybe an asterisk would probably make life a lot easier.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to
Any more questions?
All right. I think then we'll introduce Superintendent John Phelan.
Thank you, Patrice.
Sure. Sorry.
For those of you at the table, you have the budget book that has the presentation inside after the opening letter, so if you want to take advantage of that. For those of you in the audience that do not have the presentation, Finance Director Tony DeColigierro will pass you out copies of the slide. So I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you very much for allowing the schools to present their budget alongside Patrice and the town. I truly appreciate the work of the warrant committee, the capital committee, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen. We, we've had a lot of meetings We've had a lot of meetings leading back to last spring and into the fall of 2019 to get ready for this fiscal '21 budget. And like Patrice, I feel very fortunate to be part of a group of people who are fortunate enough to be conservative and thoughtful and strategic as a town that has allowed us to go through six fiscal years with a three-year budget override back in 2015. One of the big elephants in the room is the bill that everybody just got in January. And I've met with two groups of people on both ends of that spectrum in the last two weeks. I was the guest lunch server here at the Council on Aging a couple of Fridays ago, and I also met with the Windbrook PTO parents last Wednesday night. So, you really get a good sense of where people stand and what their concerns are, all of which is just great feedback that reinforces our need to be thoughtful, conservative, but also moving the community forward. The comments I got at the, at the Council on Aging when I was serving lunch was, "You are the school guy, you're breaking my back." So, I said, "I'm sorry, ma'am. I'll serve you lunch, and I can tell you how I'm trying not to break your back." And it was a wonderful afternoon, and the stories got better, and the afternoon got better from there. What the PTO parents were concerned about the budget, this is a real concern, and I want to make sure that the community knows that we're being very respectful as we approach this work. The work that has started over a year ago to try to make '21 the fiscal year work without an override and get one more year out of it, I think was something that we are taking a great chance on, but serves the community well for one more year as we look forward to trying to move more funds towards the town. To go to the end, we are only asking in the schools for a 3.06 percent increase in the budget, and we'll tell you how we got there, and we'll work through our numbers. As always, we like to use three different views of the budget to make sure we walk through it and scaffold the experience for the community and all the different committees that do our work. We use FY '20, obviously, to inform what we want to see in FY '21. We also recognize the enrollment and the class sizes that are a huge impact externally to our district, that's been mentioned several times tonight, and just how we plan our budget and how we create three different categories of how we fund our budget moving forward each fiscal year. We use FY '20 to look at '21, the context of our expenditures. We are always monitoring our yearly budget in FY '20, the Q2. We're monitoring our three-year special education plan, which is a very volatile set of lines in the past that we have been able to create a smooth ride for, for the, for the town over the last few years. And as always, our strategic plan, working with our Leadership Council. Enrollment and per pupil spending go hand in hand. Each year, we like to just take stock of where we are in comparable towns. I just received a call tonight from the town of Natick, asking, "I saw your budget online. How are you going up by that many students and only asking for 3%? What's the trick?" I said, "There is no trick, we're, we're just trying to all make it work." Natick is not on this list, but these are the group of towns that we've been comparing ourselves to each year. Belmont has always ranked lower on this list as to what they spend per child. This is all data from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. This list, starting with Cambridge, at a whopping $29,520 per student at number one. Goes all the way down to the next page at Belmont, second to the bottom, at $14,246 at 26. And when folks say, "How is that possible? You've been adding teachers, you've been getting a larger budget each year since the override." The, the schools have been the benefactor of the override, more so than any town department. It's because the pie might be getting a little bigger in our revenue, but the amount of slices that we have to slice it up, it just keeps getting more with all the students that we receive. When we look at that in comparison to some of the summarizing data, the average for the state is $16,495, and Belmont is below that number at $14,226. So, for every child in Belmont, we are working with $2,249 less per child as the average community in the state. When we like to compare ourselves to the average of our cohort, which is that chart just below in yellow, the average of the cohort is about $19,000. Again, we pay $14,200. That's an average of $4,800 less for every single child of the $4,800 or so that we serve each day. When we look at that through a line graph, we see the gap continues. We do have a little tilt in our line at the bottom. Tony says that's a promising tilt, and I agree with him. Tony DeColigero, our Finance Director, who I thank for all this work. So, we are looking to make progress, but that, that gap continues. We have benefited enormously by the override. Again, six years out of a three-year override, I think has been, is a great testimony to every single person in this town, in the school side, in the town side, that works hard. We have increased our positions each year, we're very thankful for that. We have had an infusion into our student services and special education and out-of-district tuition lines, which has allowed us to be able to keep those lines in check. And we also have been able to set a new baseline for text materials and supplies and other operational costs that were well overdue in the district, so thank you. Throughout this budget set of years, from fiscal '18 to fiscal '21, if in fact, at any time we fail in our budgeting, that we have more in a budget line than we need, we do work with the town, and we have returned funds to the, back to the town side. Back in fiscal '18, we reduced the out-of-district line, and did not take in $334,000. We reduced that request that allowed the town to have more money back in the stabilization in free cash. In fiscal '19, we turned back $114,921 at the close of fiscal '19. In fiscal '20, the year that we're in, we reduced that ask in one of our special education lines again, and we reduced the ask from the town by $204,523. And more importantly, this year, going into fiscal '21, the school department has been able to offset $1.7 million in funds not taken from the town, and we're dipping very deep into our circuit breaker in grant funds to be able to support those budget lines. We feel that without that $2,353,000 over the last three to four years, we would have been at an override point for the town long before next November. FY '20 operations are on track, and we're on line with our budget. We are continuing to feel the external pressure of increased enrollment, increased class size, space needs. Our health insurance has been very much buoyed by the work that the town did and Patrice did to support the, that line in the budget with the change in the healthcare plan. And also, we are getting ready for the transition to a grade configuration with our new school coming online. The other elephant in the room is our enrollment and our class sizes. This is a chart that we show every October 1 of each year, we just keep adding to it. We did go up by a net number of 65 students, and we are at, as of October 1, 2019, which is our official line with the DESI gatekeepers for our enrollment, which is 4,633. We project to be at 4,700 for next year, and this does not include our out-of-district students or our preschool students. So, our real enrollment is 4,795 children in Belmont that we serve. See this enrollment in another way...
Sorry, John, is, is that last number you gave the, to be compared with 4,633, or are they not apples to apples?
4,633 is kindergarten through 12, in kindergarten and out-of-district. If you add those students, 4,633 plus those students adds up to 4,795. This is a bar graph of the same data. This is our elementary projections. We have elementary, middle, and high school projections. We are using the McKibben Report that was done in March 2018. It was the second report that he provided, that the company provided for us. As you can see, we're working through the elementary surge that happened in the '17, '18, '18, '19, and '20, '21 school years. We feel with the addition of the extra staff, the adding of the modular classrooms at the Burbank, we'll be able to sustain our class sizes that have been very balanced. We are over, in some grades, in, in some classrooms, to our school committee guidelines, but we are holding our own at the elementary level. When we get to the middle school level, you can see it's a little bit of a different story. We are currently very much running out of space and in need of more staff at the middle school. The middle school is in the middle of the wave. They are on the beach, the wave is on them. The chairs are rolling out, the surfboards are gone, the sandwich has been taken to somewhere down by Hyannis Port, and we have a lot of students at the Channery Middle School. And we haven't gotten to the peak yet. This budget does reflect an increase in staffing, despite all the other towns, not, all the other town departments not getting staffing. In the Collins Report, in our, in our Financial Task Force Report, there has always been a $400,000 plug for additional staff for enrollment, and we are going to use that this year, and we'll show you what those positions look like. When you get to the high school, we are having high school concerns with class size and caseload size for our teachers and students. They have not even hit, the water's not on the beach yet. They're still sitting, it's a good day, it's calm, the waves are good, and the wave is going to come in in a few years. We see that enrollment steadily increasing through 2024, '25, peaking at 2025, '26 at 1,667 students. The 1920, the 19, 2019 to '20 school year, we had 1,364 students. We will have over 300 more students at the high school, just at the high school, in the next five years. And as you can see, that, that line tracks to obviously go down by a little bit, but it maintains at that almost 400 students per grade level as the new normal, or the new watermark for the 9 through 12 high school grades. When we look at some of the enrollments in our subgroups, we have our students whose, whose first language is not English, and our students on IEP out-of-district. Keep an eye on this trend, because it are, they result in mandated services and positions to support those services that the state asked us for and mandates that we put in place. This chart shows the percentage change each year from the previous year. So, we're running minus 3%, 3%, very large increase in 13 and 14, and then we've averaged out here to 9% over the last two years. The amount of students that we have whose English, whose language is not English and who receive services, because a lot of students who we work with go from being non-English speakers to English speakers, in a time that's about only two years, which is one year ahead of what the state expects it to be. So, we're so proud of our students and our teachers in this program. But we have 404 students in the district who get services. We have many more who have, quote, "graduated," or what they call "flept," which is meaning they tested out, and now they have fluent English, academic fluent English. But they represent, this population of students represents 8.7% of our total population, and you can see that increase in our population has gone up. So, if our population overall is going up, and the subgroup is going up at a faster pace, we are getting more students each year who need the service. Out-of-district students, our current enrollment has stabilized, we're very thankful. This chart shows where we are this year with how many students are out-of-district getting their services and in what type of program, on the left. This chart shows what that data table looked like last school year, during the '18, '19 school year. Again, it's a very stable number. We didn't have very many big jumps, which we're very thankful for. And this chart goes back to 2012, where you can see the progression from 80 students out-of-district in 2012, peaking at 107 in 2017. And if you just freeze for a minute and think about what that 107 students means and how, when we are able to come back down to 93, one of the reasons why we were able to gain the circuit breaker money and have that conservative approach come to our benefit at this time, perfectly in this time, was because the state's circuit breaker funds are based on the year before's balance of students. So, the revenue is always a year late. So, we have a combination of the revenue, revenue coming in high for those 107 students, but now only having to service 94 or 95. So, that differential is how we're able to do our three-year plan. And for the folks who are on the Warrant Committee, School Committee liaison, longest name of a committee in America, they know what that means. We went through this three-year plan, as the school committee does, where we talk about, we like to spread that money out over three years, because we can set up a responsible view of what the expenses will be and what the revenues will be. This timing of that revenue being higher than the number of students that we serve actually creates the reason why we can go into that for $1.7 million and not ask the town for that $1.7 right now. So, part of it is good planning, and part of it is luck of how the numbers actually switched, going down in number in Belmont, but the revenue coming in a little late. It's also a function of the fact that our lab program that we belong to had been audited by the state over the last few years, and they're asking lab to not allow any of the school districts to have their money accrue over a period of time, that they have to spend it each year. So, we have lab credit money that we were able to put into that, to that reserve as well, and again, have the town not have, we can utilize those funds instead of asking the town for that $1.7 million. So, good timing, I think good planning, and, and conservative approach to the work. I think all three of those things are paying off for the district. All right, so budget planning, primary cost drivers that we have, obviously, enrollment is the number one cost driver for the district. Enrollment has increased and expected to increase through '25, '26 school year. We have been fortunate to add staff. We have been fortunate to add, add the mandated staff that we need to service our students, and we're very fortunate to maintain the level of materials and supplies that we have. External to that, we know that we are, we were able to have only a 4% increase in our health, that has been going up over the past fiscal years by nine, over eight, nine percent. We're thankful for the town's ability to shift the plan design. This is held at the 4% due to the changes to the, to the employees of the school and the town, but it was a budget saver, significant saver. Special education, just explaining again that that $1.7 million that we are not asking the town for is going to be utilized through our IDEA and circuit breaker funds and our lab funds. We will be seeking to have the transportation and contracted services lines of our budget go up by 7%. The financial highlights that we have is that we rolled everybody forward from our existing operations, plus we added necessary costs to address strategic plans that we have due to increasing enrollment and additional necessary costs of external cost drivers like special education and insurance. So, we'll show you those three categories. We try to break this down into three parts and then put it all together at the end few, so you can see how the budget's made up. When we roll everybody forward from '20 to '21, that's an increase of 3.58%. So, if we didn't have enrollment problems, this is where we'd kind of be. 4.9% in staff, 2.5 in text materials and supplies. The busing contract is up, so it's a $41,000 increase. Our fringe, which is our employee share of Medicaid, unemployment, and other non-health insurance costs, is up by 0.4%, 4.7%. And our special education, tuition, and transportation will be seen in the next line. Our strategic plan cost drivers are going up by 0.8%. We are looking to utilize the $400,000 that has been put in the Financial Task Force budget to be able to hire 5.8 teachers. Two of them will be a half-team of teachers at the grade six level at the, at the middle school to support class sizes in the, in the team subjects of math, science, social studies, and English. The same for grade seven. These are the two peak grades, these are the two biggest grades in the district. We will do a 1.0 high school science teacher, that will be split between chemistry and biology, I believe. We are in need of a 0.4 high school language teacher and a 0.4 high school social studies teacher. That was what we got down to on our list of our 15 needs. We only went down to 5.8, because that represented the dollar value that we have in the budget that we're responsible to come in on. We have other needs that we will show you momentarily. We are adding another bus to make it a total of 10. That number is only $33,000, because we're going to use our revolving account for bus fees to fund the second half of that bus. We believe that as we get into our new configuration, and we have more students walking, and we have a four-to-six school, that we may have more busing challenges in anticipating that we'll have a large bus route of four to six students, because it's a town-wide school, and a large set of routes for the 7 through 12 school. So, we're trying to anticipate that in the fiscal years, moving towards that configuration switch. Again, our health insurance for the new position is $50,000. Again, our health insurance for the new position is $50,000, which is $484,000, a 0.8% increase. And lastly, external cost drivers actually go down because our special education ask from the general fund budget is down. Health insurance only went up by $357,000. Special education tuitions is being decreased by 1.3. I know I've been saying 1.7, 1.3 is the net number, the, the other $400,000 is part of how we roll the budget over. Special education transportation goes up by $96,000 and special education contracted services. That's a total of a negative ask of $796,304. When you put those three charts together, you walk right through the first column, FY20, and we have all of our numbers for staff, text materials and supplies, busing, fringe, special education, and the total. The total FY20 budget was $60,649,451. As we look at the roll-forward number, plus the cost driver number, plus the external cost driver number, the total budget that we're asking for is $62,506,441,000. That's a 3.06% increase in a $1.8 million ask from one year to the next. This next chart shows the distribution of those funds in a pie chart form. There are other charts that are in your book that you can look at as well. There are some technical assumptions that we like to make sure we're all clear about. The school budget is $62,506,441. We are developing a five-year plan with the Financial Task Force Two Committee to look at what the needs are in the district moving forward. In our Phase One of that, we were chunking out our years, year one through year five. We had 15 FTEs that we feel are needed this year. We obviously know we can't afford 15 FTEs, but we have a plan that has all the lines of needs that we see are absent from our school program, that we feel are justified moving into a school district that's growing at such a certain pace. But we obviously are meeting the financial line that we have, so we will show you what that will look like in a few minutes. Based on those, those fundings, we, the, only 5.8 of those positions are in the budget, and obviously the health insurance we've talked about. Special education, we're, we're able to be able to reduce that by 1.7, and we're be able, we're counting our federal grants and our state grants as even. We are a little disappointed, like others are, that our Chapter 70 money has only gone up by 1.4, 5%. We have been averaging over 5% a year. We did all project 5% increase. When Patrice and I and Tony and Glenn sat down to do the budget, we always try to assume a reasonable state increase. So the 5% that we put in place was always reasonable, we always came in a little low and had a little extra put in free cash. We're actually minus this year. So I would say to the question earlier, the Chapter 70 model that was put in place that is in the governor's budget, 85% of the dollars that were put out by the state that are listed in the millions are going to just 35 communities. So Belmont is one of the other 300 or 280 communities splitting up just 15% of those dollars. We hope that when the bill reaches the Senate and the House that that becomes a little different of a story. We feel as though not only are we do more Chapter 70, but Chapter 70 is usually very much linked to how many students you have, and we're also still growing. So it's not like we're flat in student number and we didn't get that much more money. We actually grew by 65 students and didn't get the normal bump that we normally get. So we, you know, we hope that that, that political work that's done on Beacon Hill over the next few months produces some better numbers for the town and for the schools. I know the school department and the Board of Selectmen and members of all the committees here, and the school committee, and the Mass Teachers Association, and the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and the school committees, all lobbied hard for this change that they thought would leave everybody harmless but rise for those who need it. And so we hope that we can be able to shift this a little bit to see if we can get some more dollars from the state. This was the list that we had when we got together last, last spring with the Leadership Council, again this fall, to talk about how we could scaffold the needs based on enrollment and the different parts of our, our school organization. We were hoping obviously for the positions that were highlighted are the ones that we're putting into the budget because that adds up to the $400,000. Through some of the conversations we've had with the Warren Committee, who attends our finance committee meetings, we wanted to be transparent about what we really need that goes beyond that. Because in the case that any more money comes forward, or Chapter 70 does change, or we're able to do something different, this is the list that we would use to actually show that, you know, these are the needs, and this is what we would like to do if there was more money. And I'll give you an example. This year, when we started school, at one of our schools, we had 38 more students on an IEPs than we did the year before. We had to hire a special educator because the numbers warranted another mandated professional person. Our EL population went up by much more than we had projected. We had to hire an EL teacher. So we know each year, based on our enrollment and based on the complexion and the makeup of our enrollment, we have a lot more students leave and come than people think. So our enrollment is increasing by 65 students, but we registered over 450 new families to the district last year, 350 who were in kindergarten, but 150 who came and went. So we're introducing a lot of new students and families to our school system every year, and sometimes that means you have to strategically leverage different resources to make sure that you give students what they need, and that's what we do each year. So we put this whole list out there to make sure, and if we don't get anything below the highlighted, this is the beginning of what next year looks like. Because those are the needs, the needs really don't change unless our student needs change between now and next year. Unknown variables, further increases in enrollment beyond what we project in our subcategories in our, in our aggregate enrollment. We'd like to think that we won't have any decreases in our federal grants. Metco and circuit breaker reimbursement, IDEA, Title I, Title II A have not been determined yet. Overall, the out-of-district funding being available next year is a concern. The reserve that we have tapped to make sure that Fiscal 21 works is done with some risk that if we do have students move into the district or become in a situation where we need to fund their, their school experience outside the district, that, that would pose a challenge to the Belmont Public Schools. We don't really know how the new routine will work with our lab credits each year. This is just the beginning of a new process. It's always been a positive experience with lab. We do seem to be in a good standpoint financially with lab, but we just don't know what it will look like every year. So after a few years goes by, we'll be able to predict that a little more and project it out in the future. And again, the concern with Chapter 70, which we all thought would go up by at least 5%, given all the work that was done, only went up by 1.5%, which was $338,163 less than The next step, this is the Draft One FY21 budget. We presented this budget at School Committee last week. We, we thoughtfully presented to you all tonight. The School Committee will take March to take any comments. We'll work with the Finance Committee as well as the Warren Committee group that connects to our Finance Committee to talk about any questions through March. That was the plan that I think we put in place with Jack and the group, was to be able to let us get it all together and then have the questions come in March. So we look forward to those meetings. We are moving from Tuesday mornings to Wednesday mornings. Program alert, bottom of the screen. The building committee meetings that I go to, internal building committee meetings have been shifted to 8:00 AM on Tuesday, every Tuesday, so we're going to move our finance over to Wednesdays. We will be getting ready for the, the spring town meeting and look forward to the work forthcoming on our budget this year. So thank you, and I want to thank Tony DeColigero. I want to thank our six School Committee members, all of who are very plugged into this work. I want to thank Patrice and Glenn and everybody on the town side. This, this really started in, in May or April of last year, working through the summer and then through the fall, and then getting to the point where we are right now. So we're very thankful for the collaboration on both sides of the towns, community, and all the, and all the people who work for the committee, so thank you. Any questions? Jack Weiss?
John, a general question. Patrice was very surface fact about what she can say because of union negotiations, but the town budget has 0% hold. Is the school budget prepared? With a simple assumption, I presume that the roll forward could look like your numbers included some factor, we don't need to know why, but some factor, so that we don't have the exposure if there's any increase in the, in the contracts that we might have on the council.
I, I, we are squarely in the middle of contract negotiations, and I don't, I think it would be a disservice to the town to be able to comment on that right now. Yes, Paul?
John, can you give us a sense on the fees within the Bishop and Ewing contract at the level? I don't see it as a kind of argument, but what are the estimated quote fees to the food line? If you should ever have the, what is the, what's the level?
We don't plan on raising fees at all. We plan on keeping kindergarten, sports fees, club fees, all at the same level. There are revolving account charts in the binder that you have tonight, so you can take a look at what those balances are and how they work and how they contribute to the lines that they support. There is discussion preliminarily with our food service group. The Food Service Consortium that supports, it's a, they, they buy in bulk, all the towns buy in bulk, and ironically, the main provider of many of what schools buy for school lunches has decided not to accept the bid that they normally take every year, so we only had one bidder for the school year that we're in for a two-year bid. So we have higher costs for all of our food. The, the bidder that decided not to take part was taken by the casino, because they're right next to the casino. So they're the sole provider for the casino, you can't make this up. And we were left with one bidder, who then knew that they were the only bidder, took advantage of the fact that they were only bidder, and not just Belmont, but the eastern half of, of the state, which bids together for food service. So lunch prices might go up by 25 cents, but that would be the only thing that would go up. And that would be a proactive measure to make sure that we were able to, to get the two-year budget in line. Food service is not in this budget, it's, it's a self-sustaining program. Laurie Slapp?
Just, just a comment, I want to thank everyone for all the work that went into this, and I also want to thank you for giving the Warren Committee some advance notice of what the detail would be. One thing I just wanted to mention in relation to a comment you made, John, that I certainly hope that the Chapter 70 money does come in higher in a couple of months, but I think that as the Warren Committee starts going through the budget, we should have a discussion as if it is higher, if it goes to free cash. I mean, I know there's belt tightening across the town, so I think there's certainly a very long list of needed positions in the school department that I fully support, but I know it goes across the town, so I would just ask us all, I think, if that does go up, we should put that up for discussion.
Absolutely. Yes?
There wasn't anything in, related to the grade reconfiguration, and I'm assuming that's because that would require extra staffing. Can you talk a little bit about like the planning process for that?
So the question was, what's the planning process for the grade configuration and in turn, what are the budget implications for that? We currently have several committees working on the grade configuration work. We have a district configuration education plan. We have the Visioning Committee that's been working since last spring. They'll be reporting out a timeline of what their work has, has taken place at our next meeting in February. We have a Technology Committee that's meeting to talk about what kind of technology needs are going to be available at the, the high school and then down throughout our K to 12 group. We will begin to put in place a scheduling and start time committee, so if you go onto the website and see it, we put it in timeline form so people can see when each committee starts and when their work begins, because we don't have to do everything at once. We actually are trying to stagger it out so we can do it in a way that's thoughtful and get people involved in different subjects as, as, as needed. So some of our K4 conversations, as an example, won't really happen for two years, but our nine, 12, and 7, 8 conversations have to happen now, and our schedule conversations have to happen now. When it is all said and done in our budget and our five-year plan, there are, there are positions needed at certain junctures. So believe it or not, I know that the steel just went up and you, and you were all excited to see the steel go up, but that building has to be done not by next September, but the following September. That's a year and a half away. So we know that we need a couple of more teachers to support that, that's represented in our high school. That will be a partial building, it won't be a whole building. Then in 2023, when our seventh and eighth graders move up, we know we're going to have a significant need to scale up to the four-team approach that we built for to be able to support the high enrollment. I, I like to say, and will continue to say, that we're not adding staff to put in the new building, we're adding staff to support 400 students, no matter where they live every day. And so the, the positions that we have here are the beginning of that work. We're doing a half-team in grade six and grade seven because we know we have to build a team of four eventually, and we really need the teachers now. A half-team is not ideal, but it's better than having no half-team at all. So we're finding space, we may have some folks travel, this is going to be logistically, I think, a challenge, but it's, again, it's that incremental work that we're doing to get to that place, so when we move in, in 2023 with seventh and eighth grade students at the new school, we are not asking for this many folks, that we've been asking incrementally for the staff to support the increase in enrollment. That will also include positions like nurses, administrators, guidance, social workers. When you, when you look at this list that we're starting with, these are all straight enrollment. The, the category list, the E stands for enrollment, S stands for social, emotional, E is enrollment and mandated, A is achievement, and so we have a little scale that we use to identify what the positions are for and what's driving the need for them. And we are in the process of coming up with that five-year plan that has this list go all the way down through Fiscal '26, which represents every incremental move in the configuration plan, which the last move would be our four to six students going up to the upper elementary school, which is now the Chennery School, and how that is staffed and how we serve those students as well. Yes, in the back, Jack?
John, I presume that the budget that we see is based on the net change in the staff. As that wave of enrollment flows through to different grade cohorts, there's movement within fewer elementary school teachers, more middle school teachers or whatever, and what we see here is the net, that you are still managing the, the individual buckets as those enrollments change.
Yeah, we, we haven't lost any elementary teachers, we'll lose one at the end of this year, I believe, but next year's third, next year's fourth grade at Butler will be the last bubble class. And then after that, all of our schools will, are built, the Winbrooks are four-strand school, the Burbank is now a four-strand school, the Butler will go back to a three-strand school, and then the, the Wellington's always been a five-strand school. When you see our numbers, and they're in there, they are, right now with, we, you know, that, so that one teacher will come out, so that will be a teacher that we can utilize. We are at 24, 23, 24, 23, 22 across all of our second, third, and fourth grade. So all those teachers, they, they just provided the service, and we scaled up to that new normal, especially the Burbank new normal, which is adding a whole grade, or having, adding a whole nother class for every grade. So we believe those teachers stay in place because the enrollment that we continue seeing mandates that we need that many first-grade teachers, that many third-grade teachers, that many fourth-grade teachers. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
All right, if there are any other questions, just a couple of quick comments to, to wrap up. I think his folks probably now appreciate this FY21 budget process was no small feat. I think it was pretty remarkable that we've been able to stretch this override for yet a six-year, and I know a lot of work went into getting there. So particular, particular thanks to Patrice and Glenn for all the work on the town side, John and Tony doing incredible work on the school side. I think it's also worth noting that we had a lot of town departments, and I think by extension, sort of school departments, that have stepped up and, and said, you know, I know this is a tough year, it's a belt-tightening year, we're going to find a way to, to sort of get it done and make it happen. So huge thanks goes out to all the folks that were involved in, in that process. In terms of next steps, we now kind of enter the, the phase of kind of vetting this budget and leading up into town meeting, so that process is well underway. I will say simultaneously, the Financial Task Force now has a pretty clear FY21 budget on which to kind of build out the next five years. So we've been simultaneously working with the various different town departments, and the schools are doing the work on their side to figure out what does the five, next five years look like, both in terms of their needs for level services as well as kind of a look like, both in terms of their needs for level services, as well as kind of a question of what is their what budget look like. And we're now pulling all of that data that we've gotten from the various different town departments together, with now a solid FY21 budget that provides the foundation, and we'll be working in the coming weeks to put together that five-year projection that we'll be working with many folks in this room to vet. So it's a long road ahead. I think it ultimately, now that we've exhausted almost all of our one-time funds, it will lead very likely to a November override, but we want to make sure that that's an informed process, and we'll be looking for participation from this group to help us vet those assumptions and to help guide that ultimate recommendation. So with that, I don't know if there are any other final comments. All right. Big thank you again to everyone for coming out this evening and for all the participants for putting the content together. With that, do I get a motion to adjourn the Select Board?
Yes, you may, Mr. Chair. Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.